This conference will now be recorded.
There it is.
I'd like to open the workshop session on council rules. Call to order at 7:00 PM on February 13th, 2023.
March 14th.
Oh, March 13th, 2018. Meeting call to order.
Is an agenda?
Oh.
We were on 24.
It's a motion to approve the agenda.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Moore.
So moved. Is there a second?
Thank you, but no.
I'll second.
Thank you, Council Ash. Would you call roll, please, Stephanie?
Council Ash?
Aye.
Council Ash?
Aye.
Mayor Hoover?
Aye.
Council Wagner?
Aye.
Council Webb?
Aye.
Motion heard.
Okay, getting right into council rules. I believe we left off at number 24. My memory is correct?
Sounds correct.
I put a little red arrow, so.
Okay.
That one can be found on page...
Page number on the new one.
Not numbered.
What new one?
Anyway.
What she handed out?
Couple pages in.
It's just the council.
Permission permitted to approach.
And you didn't want us to have it.
I do.
Seems cut and dry to me.
Any questions about 24?
Not a question but a comment that we all have to be prepared that should someone wanting to speak stand up and start approaching, just leave them on.
Listen to me.
I still vote for a trap door under the... We'll have to work it in the next fiscal year's budget.
Section 25.
That's a fairly new addition. I think that was one we approved when we last approved it.
Yep.
Yeah. 26.
Some people will remember.
I think I've only done this once or twice.
Yeah, it hasn't happened very often.
Not very often. Sometimes it can get a little confusing, but Stephanie does a really good job of straightening it out.
Thanks.
I don't know if I could, how well I could do.
You want to have the same copy that they have, Stephanie.
You should, yes.
We're on section 27. You're on section 5. Keep going.
26. Reconsideration, they're back here.
Oh, and I hope we're not on section 6. Must be a late one.
Yeah.
We are not staying that late.
I got one.
Still hungry. Time change?
Yeah, it's no joke. It's like three hours last night.
Just...
That one's pretty cut and dry.
Pretty cut and dried. But there's been times that we've had votes and then I think it was pointed out that you really understand what you just did and then it was like, ah.
I believe that was the exact language that was used, too.
And usually it's either at the same meeting or the meeting after.
Yeah.
Would you give an example, Stephanie? Say somebody made a motion.
Um, let's say, okay.
All right.
First one, I'll just make it up.
Okay.
There's a council meeting, they vote to demolish a building. Everyone approves it. We all agree it needs to be demolished.
Unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent.
Not unanimous. Make it three to two.
Yeah.
Okay, three to two. I'm just going to make it a pretty obvious scenario. Well, in the two weeks between that meeting and the next meeting, somebody comes forward with full funding to reconstruct that building to code, to save it. Well, the council thinks that it's a historical structure and would like to save it. So at this meeting, one of the people on the prevailing side, who won, who voted in favor of demolishing it, says, "I would like to make a motion to reconsider emotionally the previous meeting, to blah, blah, blah." And then council approves it. And then they make their motion to take the funding from the other place or to donate the building to that entity so that they can rebuild the structure or bring the structure up to code. So that would be a pretty obvious, I mean, everyone's going to agree for that scenario.
So I like this last sentence, "No motion can be made for further reconsideration without unanimous consent."
Yeah. So if the person makes a motion to reconsider and that motion fails, you cannot make it again to try and bully everyone into it without everyone being unanimous.
Right. Okay.
So I guess I have to ask the question. So your same example, and three weeks later, somebody comes forward with that information.
Was there a meeting between that?
Yeah.
It would be a different kind of motion, which it would be in that manual. It wouldn't be a motion to reconsider. It'd just be a new motion, probably, and have to convert. I'm pretty sure.
So you could bring a new motion.
Yes.
It's like a reconsideration, really.
Yeah, but technically, a reconsideration must be at that meeting or immediate meeting after.
So we're just kind of splitting hairs.
Usually it is because you misunderstood the actual ramifications of what would happen if Penn voted yes or no.
Yeah, which we had that before. Somebody made the motion and didn't realize that they actually wanted to make the exact opposite motion for what they, I think it was Bruce, that they intended, and then I had to walk through the process to make sure that we did it the right way, so.
Think I was the guy who said, "You know what you did good."
And it passed. Like, oh, God.
Okay, any other discussion on 26? Moving on to 27, ordinances. Reading required. Question.
So in paragraph C on that page, it says that each council member must be, and three copies for the public, must be available at least, at least a week prior to the first reading. Do we do that?
Yeah, because it's posted online 10 days before.
And that's just what I wanted to get.
Yeah, so there's a link to the draft ordinance and then you want it, it was good for me.
Yeah. The reason I was asking is because our packets don't come out until the week.
I don't, I don't know that I actually print them for you guys on that 10-day mark, but they are available and I could print them if I wanted to.
You have, it says you have to provide it to us.
I would actually have to physically bring it to you?
No.
Or email it to you?
Email. It just says provided.
Yeah, the email.
Well, it says, "A copy of the ordinance is provided for each council member greater than a week before."
Yeah, and we'd be on the website, the copy, and I can always print it for you guys if you want it. But I could certainly send you an email saying, "There's the announcement."
Yeah, that would be efficient. I just want to make Saturday trouble.
Yeah, that'd be pretty easy to do.
That was all I had on that texture.
Anybody else? 28, Roberts Rules.
Which Roberts rule?
Yeah.
We've got it.
We're somewhat close to them. I mean, we don't...
We're not a strict Oregon legislature, but yeah.
Strict with it, but we're pretty close.
Yeah, they can be intense.
Request for city employee projects.
So one of the things I've noticed on this paragraph was the delineation or specification that questions requiring significant staff time or resources, 30 minutes or more, shall require the approval of the majority of council. I'm not sure, I think we, I think we do a pretty good job of it when we're asking staff to do something and you're really good about saying, is that, you know, is that the consensus or is everybody okay with that? I just, it was just something I wanted to point out that we need to be more intentional about it and 30 minutes is not very much time.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't take much to get to that point, so I just, that was just a... Well... Question. Should we just, if we're asking staff to do something, always ask for consensus?
You can't outside of...
Approval, approval of the majority of the council, pardon?
You can't outside the meeting.
No.
So I think this is for outside, right?
No. I would have thought this was during a meeting.
I would say at all.
Oh, but I see what you're saying.
This is for if you're not in a meeting.
Oh, okay.
No.
This is a meeting, we can...
This is all written...
...to do anything.
Questions requiring significant shall require approval of the majority of council. So this isn't only as it relates to the meetings?
So if one of us, two days from now, came up with something and advised staff to do it and it was going to take more than a half hour, it should come to council and...
The council would say, "Yes, we would like to work on this project."
Yes, so that way Josette doesn't have five bosses telling her to spend five different projects that are time consuming.
And then that's my, then maybe... But it's, it's funny. Okay. I, oh, sorry. Didn't mean to kick you. No, I just, I want to make sure that we're following our own processes, making sure that we don't... It's so easy to say, "Oh, but what about this and what about that and what do you think about this?" And then can we, you know, when you, when you meet with the, when you meet with her, it's just hard to... Quest, I understand questions, questions versus requests. I just, I just wonder if all requests should just come before council for research, whatever. I don't know. Ignore me just...
But then we couldn't just, like, sometimes when I go into her office and I have questions, it's like, it's something she just has to look up real quick or reference.
That, that's different, a question versus a request. Can, can you please, you know, how? Well, no, I don't know. Like I said, just ignore me. I'm being picky on that, so I withdraw any comment. Sorry.
No, I can see where you're going with that because it's easy to sit in there and go, "Hey, why don't we, can we have our staff do this? Or we can have them do that," you know, and it makes logical sense, but maybe everybody else isn't clued into it and...
Well, if it's going to take 30 minutes or more, then you can't.
Yeah, but question, is that aggregate or is that per item? And I'm not trying to be funny. I'm, you know, it's like, well, you, you comment, "Oh, well, you know, it'd be really great if, if Jeff or whoever could go..." Okay, you're, I'm talking now.
Yeah.
"Go check out the pump because I thought it sounded funny." Oh, yeah, and you know what? I also noticed that there was the cracking in the sidewalk. It's a really dangerous one. Should be fixed. Then, oh, and by the way, there's lights out, you know, so, so...
But those would just be work orders.
Well, I, like I said, I'm just throwing stuff at the, at the wall because I can't think of anything because I don't...
Those are all maintenance things. The way I think of this one is the doors at Anderson Park are really decrepit. Is there a way that we can pay for that? I can look that up and see if we can afford it. Or I think town should have a pool. Is there a grant available for that and we should apply for it? Those are significantly different time constraints of how much time it will take to do those things. It's a big project that's going to take hundreds of hours.
Yeah.
Okay. Five hours for me to figure out if we could, if it's a feasible project versus pretty quick to see if I can afford to replace the doors.
But again, I'm, I'm, it's one of those things, because when, when you start talking about one thing, it can really snowball into, oh, and that, another thing I was thinking of, like you said, you know, you'd start talking about a grant for this and then all of a sudden down the road, yeah.
And a lot of times when I'm requesting things, it's, I'm relying on her discretion as to what's within the realms of the staff and, and her office. So it's like, one example was, you know, they took some of that rock we pushed up down there by the Blue Heron and they did the dump road with it. And then I'm down at the lake and I'm seeing our road down there is full of potholes and I was like, "Hey, you know, do you think that staff would have the time and would it be appropriate to use some of that rock to..." See, that, that's one of those. But again, the city administrator should be able to, "Well, we, you know, that rock's not our, you know, isn't budgeted for that or, or we don't know if we can fit staff in there," you know, I just rely on her discretion. Because the reverse of that, just, and we as council up here are going to go, "We want you to do it." And, and that kind of takes some of her flexibility out then of, she goes, "You know, that's a good idea, but we don't have time right now to do that, you know, maybe two months down the road when things calm down."
Again, that's the purpose of having suggestions provided or questions provided ahead of time to the meeting, saying, you know, "Hey, I have these ideas." And again, you know, how does that, one person going in and making suggestions, you know, is that... Is, I don't think fair is quite the right word, but, but if there's other things people might have ideas for, but you were there first, you know, that, that creates almost like a, an imbalance of, well, your things get done, your things count. But, because you're not speaking for all of council, you're speaking for you. Because you work here or you, you're retired or whatever, you're always here. Some of us are never here, except when we sneak out to the doctor and, you know, we happen to say, "Oh, by the way, do you have a minute and can I get an update?" So that's just access and familiarity and, and that ability to just, you know, be there to ask those questions and you're more observant because you are at the lake or you are by Blue Heron or you are at the dump or whatever it is. You know, everybody has their own specific, I won't call it an agenda, but observations of things that need to be done. And I guess if we're talking about a, a best way of proposing those things, I guess we should figure out, is that a, I don't know?
Back to Stephanie's take, it's basically a maintenance issue.
Yeah, so if it's something that, like basically, any citizen will come forward and say, "These are the things that I've noticed in town that need addressed, potholes, lights, blood, whatever," versus, "We really need to figure out how to pay for these streets. Can you research what it would take to implement a gas tax?"
Yeah.
Significant project, be council-directed, regular maintenance stuff. If you see those, don't wait for a council meeting to go.
No, you send an email always.
Yeah, those are, those are just maintenance things that anyone would come in and...
Right.
Versus a request for a project.
And I guess the other question that I have is, does Dale saying, "We really should all those potholes by the lake," carry a different weight than if Mary Jones comes off the street and comes to the desk and says, "I noticed potholes by the lake"? Is that going to get acted on at the same rapidity as Dale saying to the city administrator, "The holes by the lake need fixed." And I am sorry, I'm making this last way longer than it should. I want to get through this thing like now.
That really depends on the delivery of the counselor and what their expectations are. If they're going to hold that person to the fire and say, "Why isn't this done? I told you," as a citizen. And also the person receiving that information, understanding that outside of this room, they are not acting as a council member.
Right.
They are just bringing you stuff.
Yeah. I just, I just...
That line will be, it'll be this.
Oh, it is. It's a very difficult line to not cross easily.
Now, if I'm, if, and I'll, I'll give you a clue. When I'm really pushing an issue, it comes before the council and I ask for consensus of council.
That's the way it should.
Yeah. And I'm not, I'm not saying you do.
For then, then, if it's not getting done, then council is directed. So I, I've learned that.
Yeah.
I shouldn't call it a game, but it's, it's, it's how it works and...
Process.
I can go in and suggest things till I'm blue in the face and then I know that some of them aren't going to get done because there's other priorities.
And I just...
Sometimes people are just nice and not want to tell you that, "No, it's not going to get done."
I, I am not speaking to this as speaking to us.
Yeah.
I am speaking to this as someday, some of us will not be on council.
Yeah.
And we don't know who's going to be sitting in these five seats. And are they going to be as thoughtful as you are? And is there going to be a city administrator who receives it in the same manner? And I just want to make sure, you know, maybe we can just think about this collectively, not now, not hashed out now, to see, is this really tight enough to make sure that we're protecting staff from, I won't call them rogue counselors, but a counselor who is a little pushier.
Which it has happened.
Yeah.
Can't imagine ever. I've been hearing these for a long time. Yeah, I mean, it, it has happened and I just want to, you know, I, I, I forget that this isn't just for the five of us. It really is, this is for the future council. How do we want them to be behaving?
Yeah.
So that was, that was, I'm done. I'll try to be quieter.
Where are we?
20, 30.
30.
30, okay. Council discussion and decorum.
I learned something reading this. "Council members will not attempt to edit or revise prepared ordinances."
Edit or prepare?
Edited, edit or revise prepared ordinances. Like when we see something on, it's like, well, shouldn't it read this? We're not supposed to do that.
Where is D?
D. "We will not attempt to edit or revise..."
During a public meeting.
During, yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah. It makes sense, but yeah, it's good.
Yeah, but you can pin this.
Right, or, or ahead of time, send it in because then there could be an observation, "Oh, wait a minute, let's put it off for another meeting because I guess that isn't really what we meant to do."
Well, it kind of defeats the advertising world, too, on an ordinance because you drastically change in an ordinance in the meeting and in the public, you know, it could totally mean something different.
Yep, yeah, it's like the smoking thing.
Ordinance intended to come to you guys for adoption.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the administrator and attorney, I think, are better equipped to think about all the possible outcomes and ramifications of a change instead of just, "We want to change this because we have this one thing in mind and we're not looking at the big picture," which is critical.
So you either repass it or send it back for revision.
Yep, exactly.
And I am so guilty of, I will do my best to...
You mean to be brief and the same?
To be brief and focus on a single issue or topic at any time.
Okay.
I will do my best.
Okay.
Pick me if I'm not.
Is there a time limit?
Free.
Okay.
You have the gall.
I know.
As long as we try to do our best, that's all we could do. We ready to move on to representing city or not?
Some more stuff.
Just, just, and I know we talked about it the other day, that we recognize counselors wishing to speak in the order of their requests. That was something, again, I wasn't even really thinking about, but, because a lot of us will say, "Oh, but wait a minute," and we just raise our hand and just go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's hard not to just...
I'll, I do my best and I think I do pretty good when I see a hand raised and then I, I try to give each council their due turn. I wish we were more of an, in an oval, yeah, so you could see everyone easier, but, because it's, I'm focusing over here on this, what this counselor is saying and then it's hard for me, you know, so I'll try to do my best on that.
And I think, I think all of us have gotten really good at saying, "Oh, so and so raising their..."
Yes, and that's what I need, too.
Yeah, give me a heads up, that's fine.
Section 31?
Sure.
Section 1?
31.
Yep.
Yeah, this one here, it's a good review for me. There's been a few times that usually I don't represent, you know, in council, just a citizen.
Yeah, my note to myself on this was, "No quote, I believe, dot, 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 but the city's position is X, Y, Z."
Yeah.
It's like, it is, it's hard when there's something that we have voted on that I'm opposed to and it doesn't happen often. But sometimes there are things that I'm just in total disagreement about, well, not now, but in the past. And it's really, really hard not to say, "Well, they voted it that way," or something. You know, you've got to be, you're a team player, you're part of the team. There's no strain from that, so.
Because this one here specifically, I don't know what school's going to be. I imagine we're putting in that grant for SRO and, you know, and my wife says, "Well, you should probably go up there, you know, be at their school board meeting." And I go, "Well, I'm conflicted on because I'm a counselor," but I just lays it out very well, you know, that, and I could relay that council voted to apply for that grant, so they must be in support of having that officer in the school. All right, I'm good with it.
Are we ready for 32, sir?
Yeah.
I have a question.
Okay.
We used to have a liaison, speaking of the school district, with the school district as a...
Yeah.
It's not a committee liaison, like we, it's because they're not a committee of us, but I know, and I was not always comfortable with the fact that I was on both, to, to be that person because I'm, I, I feel it's a, it's almost a conflict. It's just an awkward position to be on. Yes, I go to both meetings. It makes sense, but I would like, I would like to see somebody else being that person. But I would like to ask, I don't know if this is the right place to insert that we can have those or if it's even important and we just have to bring it up at a meeting.
The only thing I'm not sure about that is, once you start down that road, to what end?
I think we should have it with all of our major partners, like the fire department.
So...
And...
So fire, school, West Oregon, boosters, I mean, it could continue. And I'm, I'm just going because it's your guys' nights.
Or organized at a certain level, but you had a comment with your hands.
Separate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you can finish that.
Yeah, and I, I don't disagree with you that, but we could be very specific that it is the, the, the boosters is not a, a safety or community's provider within, you know, maybe even the health. maybe even the health, because they are a major provider. But I think you're right, West Oregon, school, fire department, and maybe the health clinic, health organ, whatever their name is. Because not just the clinic, because it's a board.
Yeah.
So I don't know. I don't know. It was just something, I wasn't sure if we can, if that needs to be specified within our rules or if it's just an ordinance that we start adding.
Would you like to require or encourage?
What do I want? I would like it required. Do I believe that I, that we have that authority to require us to have one? I don't know. I think it's important. I have seen how other communities interact with their, particularly the school district, um, and have seen the relationships, like Rainier and Platskini, and how positive and how much of a partnership is. And I know that that has been a real challenge for a long time between the city and the school particularly, and even the city and the fire department. And then, you know, don't talk about the fire department, the police department, because they do not get along and I don't understand. We tried that a long time ago and I tried to explain, or they tried to explain it to me.
But I actually like that idea. Yeah, I, I'm a school bus driver, so I have a, a conflict. Well, I.
You have a different perspective.
I have a little different perspective, so I'm, I'm involved with school activities a lot.
Yeah.
And, and so being a mayor, it's kind of, it's kind of a neat thing to have a good relationship with the superintendent.
That's where I heard the, the relationships when we were at that city, well, one of the times, we were at that city county dinner and they were talking about something that had happened where there was some flooding and it was like an immediate call from the superintendent to the mayor and the mayor to the superintendent and they got all the buses up to the top and they, whatever the heck they did. But yeah, it was, it's a, it's a relationship, I think, usually.
I was for encouraging. I think that a problem with requiring is it increases the barrier for entry as a counselor. Um, if you already are on council and then there's a workshop that month and depending on whether your committee meets once or twice a month, you're already up to five meetings per month. And so as someone who, I obviously try to go to things, I've been making the, the town halls and the fire meetings and stuff as I'm able, but, um, I'm also in school and on the board of three other nonprofits and so it would be challenging if it was required. I don't know that it would.
Then it would be your choice to not attend that particular one. And I don't think it means going to every meeting. I think it's like school board once a month, you're not going to go to all the different workshops.
Maybe monitor the agendas and see things that are maybe pertinent to the city-school relationship. I mean, going through their budget process or going through, there's, there's a lot that.
It, there is a lot, but, but it, it's just like being a liaison to any of our public works. I mean, it's, that's, you take it to a different level as being as invested in it as, as a member of the committee prior to being a counselor and just becoming the liaison. Um, but I know, I mean, it's like with the, Bruce was with the, with the cemetery committee, he was very involved in that. Not just the, you know.
Yeah.
Not, everybody has their own investment. This is not a criticism or, or anything. It's just, and my husband wants to shoot me every time this happens again, but, um, it's, uh, we all have our own capacity and if, if we choose to, I mean, we should be able to choose not to participate in a committee. That's fine, or as a liaison. But I think that, I see what you're saying. I see why you're, why you're saying that, but, but it already says they shall be appointed a liaison from council.
Yeah, for a city committee.
Yeah.
No. I'm saying, I was saying beyond that.
Right.
I mean.
No, we, we, none of us should be forced to, but I think that we, that the language that we shall provide a liaison to these three or four specific organizations within our community is what I'm saying.
Like across the board or if they request it from a specific meeting, I guess.
No, that we are always there.
My, my assumption would be not that you are a liaison in the capacity you are for city committees.
Right.
Because we cannot force some entity to take on one of our representatives, but I would see it more as, like, if you're going to go down that route, uh, city counselors are encouraged to attend meetings of these entities so that they can report back and they'll be designated the liaison.
Because I think.
Or not liaisoned.
Well, I think that.
Informational.
Yeah, I think that it would be important to build that relation. Sorry. You go first.
No, it's okay. My concern would be that if we're saying, if we are promising to these groups that someone will be at every meeting, but then we are telling council, well, if you're busy, it's not required for you to be the person that goes and four counselors are busy, then suddenly one counselor is going to all kinds of stuff. So somewhere you have to have either flexibility in both pieces or rigidity in both pieces.
So I think that you choose that you do or do not, that you want to be the, the liaison and it will have to be a relationship that is built, that we need to get their buy-in, that they want us at the meetings. West Oregon may not. It's, I don't know, with, with the school.
As a citizen.
Yeah, but, but we're, we're asking, we're not asking for.
Olive branch thing with West Oak.
Yeah, not as, not as a, a member of their committee, not a member of our school board. But we are simply attending so that if they have questions of the council that we can speak. Uh, because I cannot tell you, there's often a, you make comments all the time. It's like, well, what about the school board thing on that? And it's like, well, you know, again, for me as a school board member, I can speak to it, but it's, it would be great if we had a person at these when we build that relationship that they do want us in the room during their meetings. And again, if you don't have time, you say, I'm, I'm not going to be on any of them.
Right, but if you're promising to three or four entities that we will do that and then most council just doesn't have time, doesn't claim it and someone has to go, it's going to fall on somebody. And so I think that, I agree that the effort and the, um, the show of support and community and networking is great, but I think that either, if you're going to promise it, it needs to be required of council, like fairly. And if you're not going to require of council evenly, then you need to just say, we're going to make an effort, but it is not guaranteed. Like the two pieces need to be same.
I hear what you're saying. I think I'd like a longer conversation than not writing out.
Susan.
Yes, sir.
F. Reminding you of F.
I just said we should move on.
So my official complaint with section thirty-two is that there are two of them. What's happening?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, my.
Remembering.
Yeah.
That's nice. Good catch.
I thought maybe one was thirty-three, but no, it's just.
Yeah.
Thirty-two.
Be on second thirty-two.
Yeah, second.
Thirty-two.
That like second lunch.
Second dinner. Also, F is bold.
Okay, are we on thirty-two?
Second thirty-two.
Oh.
Come to thirty-two here, thirty-two here.
Okay, second thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Confidentiality.
We haven't figured that out by now. Shame on us.
Yeah.
Yes, F is bold if you want the, the neurotic typo police over here, but other than that.
F is bold?
Yeah, F is bold for nervous.
Second.
Oh, you're on the wrong page, sorry. I'm like that.
I'm not on the wrong page.
Oh, I like it.
Okay, I tend to be on.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to thirty-three, I think we're, we're following the proper channels lately with that.
There it is, city attorney.
Ready for thirty-four?
Um, are we supposed to add in the quarterly check-ins in that?
It's not an official review or evaluation, right, of the, it's just kind of been a.
We started doing it quarterly last year.
But we don't do the official evaluation.
Until July.
Only do that once a year.
There should be some.
We could mention it.
Or quarterly's, but.
The evaluation.
Haven't been added yet.
Well. How do I put this?
Oh, just spit it out.
They're probably not being done correctly right now and so there would be a lot of enjoyment overseeing the written process about what's actually how it's supposed to work. The quarterly's are not priority work sessions.
Right.
Or this is supposed to be linked to an evaluation. If you are doing this well, if you are not doing this.
Right.
You need to improve here. You are doing great here.
So do we need to just call it something else?
Well, it needs to either be that or a priority work session.
Right. That makes sense.
And you're, you're absolutely 100% correct because the last one we did was all priority.
Yeah.
So maybe we should be actually following the policy.
Because that should be a public meeting then.
What a, under the title of that executive session, you can actually discuss.
Go ahead and use those eight, eight categories again. Yep.
So the, I think the question is, do we, are we trying to accomplish a quarterly evaluation and we need to pull the priority piece out or are we good then with only the annual and just have a quarterly priority work session?
Exactly.
I don't know what everyone's interests are.
We were verbally priority.
I agree, because that's what we're using it for, which to me means we're driving that because we want that.
But on, uh, the reason I added this in here was because that was the request of staff to know, how am I doing? How am I doing? What are the problems? What are the positives? And I, I think if you want, if we, you, we want to do a quarterly priorities update, nothing wrong with that. Add it quarterly to our agenda. But the quarterly check-in really should be, and I apologize, I haven't been at one yet, at least not this year, um, that it really should be just a check-in. How are you doing? We noticed there was a couple of problems or we did a couple of things. Um, but we've been seeing this and these are the positives. Because that's, that really is what those are for. So she doesn't just get that once a year and that was her, like.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just wonder, could we not still accomplish both of those then at the same meeting? But one is an executive session topic and one is return to.
Yeah, we could have it where it's not.
All in.
You're not required to have an executive session, but if you guys want to have one, you can.
Well, as the evaluation piece.
Yeah, but if, if somebody doesn't have an issue they want to bring up, then there's no point in meeting just to.
But if we're going to have it, so if we had the check-in and then we decided, do we want to go to executive session?
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying. I could notice it, but if nobody actually wants to go to an executive session, we won't do it.
Right.
We won't need one if.
But if the administrator is asking to know interim, how she's doing, it might be a quick, just a two-minute, like, all's good.
But that doesn't really have to be in an executive session.
Okay.
It doesn't.
No, you didn't say, you did a really good job with that project.
Yeah.
I would argue that that should be in the public. You did a great job.
Yeah.
But if you do have a criticism of the work, then you are kind of evaluating the position and.
Oh, criticism should be in.
Yeah, so it'd be a fine line you'd be dancing on. I think I'd feel more comfortable. Now, how that kind of spurred was how that leaked at Oregon City's article and that mindset of, you know, doing these quarterly evaluations, they felt that article, that it was kind of a waste of time that you, you know, when you set those priorities and then you see how your administrator works on those priorities, those, those are really the meat and potatoes, barring other things, of how well the work's being done. And that's what you're, I, I know in my mind, that's what's clicking off to me is I'm evaluating, if we set timelines and then we're looking to see how well these are being held to those or.
Or.
And so it really makes sense having that priority session, eating this back and forth on those projects and where we're at and then go to a abbreviated evaluation. It's just kind of abbreviated so you could go, okay, well, you know, I'm kind of displeased on this project because, you know, you said you're going to have it done by here. We're six months behind. Your answer tonight didn't seem legitimate. You, you know, you could, you could do that and, and then.
I, I agree completely.
I, I thought that was kind of what we were trying towards, but I do agree, we've been just doing the priority, but we haven't been doing a good job of, okay, now let's go into executive session and let's have some frank discussion back and forth. Everybody knows where they're at or if you've got something that's bugging you.
Yeah, and I know we all have the opportunity to do it when we go visit.
Yeah.
But I think that it's also important for, because I may not have a clue.
What's also.
Things that's more appropriate to do with the council and say.
And the list is comprehensive. Like when we each go for updates, it's the things that are moving currently are, you know, what's pertinent, but, um, for her to go through that whole list with five times every month is ridiculous, not a good use of time.
And to have the, my mind in the room when you're discussing it, that, oh, hey, I thought you were doing this, you know, somebody remembered something.
Any other discussion on this?
So what I got was, you guys would like to have a priority work session first. Then afterwards, you'll have a special meeting for quarterly evaluation as an executive session.
As one meeting.
One meeting.
I would call it two, just to keep the recordings tidy.
One venture to city.
One evening. Yes, yes.
One evening.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that accomplishes everything we're currently wanting from it in a more.
Perfect.
Let's.
That'll take some preparation prior to that meeting.
Yeah.
By, uh, by each one of us in, in filling out the evaluation.
Well, it's not filling out, no, that's, that is the yearly evaluation. Really only going to use topics on that form to say, you are managing staff really well.
Oh, okay.
I feel like you are failing at this topic because of this project.
Okay.
It's the, those, whatever, seven, eight categories.
I think there was eight of them, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so you don't have to fill it out every time. That's just the yearly evaluation. Those are just so you can keep on track.
So that, you know, changes for a may.
Yeah.
Anything else before we adjourn?
Thirty-five?
Section thirty-five and onward.
I guess I got ahead of myself, sorry.
We're done.
Under reminder values.
Yeah.
I think we're doing.
The role model.
Yeah.
It's a free call.
And then.
All right.
We just amended them about three years ago.
Yeah, and I didn't do anything on those.
I can get the suggested verbiage for the quarterly with the way that you guys just explained it to be on here.
Okay.
Question. It says the first meeting at which the evaluation process commenced is shall be scheduled for the fourth Monday of July. You don't. You don't necessarily stick to that.
We're supposed to.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only, we probably didn't like that. And the reason why we didn't perform the first conflict, if I remember right.
Well, I have, I have a conflict every fourth Monday, so there's that, but that's fine. I would try to come.
I think, yeah, I think the intent was to keep it in July.
Okay.
Because if you do it in August, then you're getting close to October by the time you're done.
Yeah. Remember, got away from this that one bit.
Well, we could, couldn't we do it the second Monday?
Not only does there, is that part of she gets a raise? The administrator gets a raise, and then you won't have to back.
Yeah.
Right.
Retrofit it, that it would basically, if we agreed on something, the first paycheck in that fiscal year would be correct.
That's a good plan.
Good point.
So hypothetically, if there was a conflict, we could probably try to do it second Monday.
It's always gone retroactive. At least one month.
Handle that.
I remember I.
Cross that bridge.
That would only give you guys a week to fill it out.
Right.
That's fine.
Okay.
That could do.
We will cross the bridge.
If you guys wanted, we could do it on the second Monday. And then we could change the verbiage, the evaluation form shall be distributed by the first of July. So rather than doing it at a meeting, I can email it to everyone. I do it at email anyways, to do it by the first.
When's our next quarterly coming up this spring?
April.
April?
But this is for the annual.
Okay.
You guys want to do that?
Yeah.
You guys don't have conflicts on the center?
I don't know. So the second Monday of.
The second Monday, so.
Second Monday of July is a council meeting.
But that might be two months.
First and third.
Oh, that's right.
Tonight, this is the second Monday, right now.
I know.
You're here.
Sorry.
I had the same thought, I was like, you want to just work in the meeting?
You're right.
I mean, I'm not saying we need to permanently update this because of my schedule. If, if we're fine just potentially moving it.
Adjustment.
Right, exactly. So unless everyone's excited about changing it, I don't see a problem. Okay, just leave it.
Which that's probably why we've changed it.
I'm staying forever.
Okay, anything else?
That means I can go retire at some point in time.
We're done then?
Twenty-seven.
Meeting adjourned at eight oh-five, meeting adjourned.